I would like to call to order this regular board meeting for the month of October of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. Normally, our first item of business is to accept the agenda. There is one suggested modification. I'm afraid we need actually two modifications because there has been a request from Bob Stewart to attend remotely and it, as I believe, requires a vote of the commissioners present to approve that request. And secondly, there's the desire to move the audit review up to the first item of business after the consent agenda. Do we?
We need a motion for the...
For the electronic participation?
Yeah, I can do that. So, in accordance with the section, with Section 7 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, I move to allow Commissioner Bob Stewart to attend this meeting by remote means.
I'll second that.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously, so we authorize Bob to attend remotely.
Now he knows we voted him in.
Staff did test it, so we hope everything works. We did tell Bob, though, obviously due to things out of our control, if we can't stay connected, we'll do our very best to keep him on board.
Want to wait for Bob for the...
Hello?
Hi, Bob. It's Derek Liebert. We've got you on conference phone.
Okay, great.
I believe we can hear you.
We can hear you fine.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, we have approved your attending the meeting remotely. The next item of business is a proposed additional modification to the agenda to move the review of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report up immediately after public comment. I misspoke earlier. Is there a motion to modify the agenda in that manner?
Okay.
Was that a motion by you, Bob?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Second.
That's been moved by Bob and seconded by Meredith. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well. So, next item is indeed public comment. And is there anybody here from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing no indication of that, then let's move on to the UPD new staff introductions.
Think we have Elsie and Lucy.
You have to introduce yourself?
Well, I'm gonna...
We're not gonna move over.
Do you want me to move over?
No, you can.
So, about, well, what's it been, about two months ago, Andy moved into the project manager role. And he was our athletics and wellness manager at the time. Due to looking at our priorities in the rec department at this moment and trying to see where staff fits best, we decided to go out and look for an outreach and wellness manager for the Urbana Park District. And with that, we had a lot of great applicants. Elsie was one of those and actually was the winner of the hiring process. She was with us now for about four years as the wellness or fitness manager or coordinator. And so, I'll let Elsie tell you a little bit about what she's already been doing as the outreach and wellness manager.
Sure. So, in the short time that I've been in the position, I've been able to actually be the permanent fixture at the table at some of these meetings that I think we've had more like sporadic attendance with some of these community groups, such as the Community Coalition and the Welcoming America Group through the University YMCA New American Welcoming Center. I've been to a few meetings with them. We've been able to put together actually an event as part of our Take a Child Outside Week. We coincided that with a Welcoming Week event to welcome new Americans to Champaign County and to the Urbana Park District. Earlier on, we also actually facilitated a bicycle safety and earn a bike program with Champaign County Bikes and the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club out at Crystal Lake Park. So, that was really cool. I'm trying to think what else, but it's been kind of a whirlwind over this first month.
Back-to-school blitz?
Ah, yes. That was my second day on the job. Sorry, I forgot. So, we partnered with the local Dreamgirls Academy or Champion Diaries, which is a group here in town. And we put together a back-to-school blitz hosted at Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center where we had, I think, over 100 people actually come and take advantage of getting free swimming passes from us that night and stay to swim. But a bulk of the people actually came to gather free school supplies. So, we had a line of all sorts of free school supplies that were on the list for Unit 116 schools and families were able to come and gather those for free.
Soccer game?
Oh, my gosh, you guys. I'm sorry.
Oh, it was wonderful.
Yeah. That was actually probably my favorite thing I've done so far, too. Also, as part of Welcoming Week, the school district, specifically Lucia Maldonado, do you all know who that is or no? Okay. She's kind of their Latino family liaison for Unit 116 schools. She'd contacted us to see if we could partner in some way to help them put on a Unit 116 staff versus Latino families soccer game as part of the festivities for both Homecoming Week and Welcoming Week. And then after that, they held a multicultural potluck of which we were the only community entity present. So, I had a table there and we got to hand out all sorts of materials about our programs and everything in both English and Spanish. And yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that. That was probably like my favorite thing I've done so far. That was a really cool event.
How do you see, I mean, what are your, what are your plans now for this position? What are you envisioning developing and doing with this?
Well, I can say, as I said in the beginning, I'm really excited to now be the permanent fixture at the table to meet with some of these community groups, to see how we can collaborate to better reach and better serve those within Urbana and the greater area. I'm also excited to see how our own programming can change or be added to or to absorb to kind of reach more people within Urbana. I'm really excited for things to come in terms of changes or additions to our building that might help us better, better reach people, such as the changes we have in store for Phillips in terms of the James Room in the kitchen and things like that. So, kind of letting that lead me as it, as it will. I feel that what I expect out of the position can changes every day, quite frankly. But I'm excited to actually be the person to help make these things happen for us.
Probably the biggest thing she's working on at the moment, besides all these other things, is we're getting ready on October 24th, we're gonna have a rec staff all-day meeting, more or less, going through the underserved study, looking at what we've done the last couple of years as far as non-traditional ways of reaching participants, kind of categorizing all those areas and then starting to set goals and ways we can accomplish what we've heard, not only in the study, but what we're hearing otherwise. Clark Lindsey Village, that collaboration has, has a lot to do with the underrepresented as well. So, we're kind of gonna mix all that together and start working on next year and what goals we want to set to be able to accomplish some of that. So, she dove right into the study. We've got two, three different U of I classes?
Two groups. I actually did a presentation for one of them right before coming here, just so they had a better feel of like what the park district was about because I don't know how much of the study you've read, but we don't really reach a whole lot of university students either. So, when I asked the question at the beginning of the meeting, "How many of you are familiar with Urbana Park District?", nobody raised their hand. So, it was probably a good thing if they're doing analysis of the study for us that I gave them a little firsthand look into what we do. But I have two groups working with me to analyze the underserved study, one more so doing statistical analysis and then one doing more qualitative analysis. That's a group through the School of Social Work at U of I.
These are undergraduate classes or...
No, no, graduate, graduate students.
I think they were acquainted with the parks or just not the park district as an entity? Did you have any sense of that?
They were, they were more out of the group doing qualitative analysis, the social work group, who were at least familiar with who we are and had been to a few of our parks.
Right, okay.
But the statistical group, like, none of them. I mean, I had a whole presentation. I was showing them pictures of our facilities, our parks, and they were just like, I don't, I've never been there.
Interesting.
It's like, oh, my gosh. Go to Meadowbrook, do something, visit the Aquatic Center.
I would've thought, I mean, it wouldn't surprise me if they weren't familiar with our programs, but usually people in a new community will at least be aware of and have gone to a park.
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting. Okay, something else to work on.
Lots to do.
Yeah. Shall we?
So anyhow, we're excited to have her in the position and look forward to more good things.
I'm hoping to be back next month introducing you to our new coordinator. Been working in the midst of all of that, too, on the whole lengthy hiring process of a full-time coordinator, too. So, we're right on the cusp.
Good.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming out this evening.
Lucy? Sorry. Ellen's out today, so I told her I'd take a shot at introducing Lucy. Lucy Houston is interning with Urbana Park District to help with the Urbana Parks Foundation annual appeal and giving campaign this fall. So, she'll be working here through November. And Lucy's originally from New York, recent graduate from Syracuse University. She works right now at the University of Illinois as a research assistant in the Information Technology School. And she has a certificate in fundraising from NYU and experience working in development for historic preservation nonprofits. And she's interested in learning more about fundraising methods for park systems, which is what brought her to us. And so, with that brief introduction, I'll let her tell you a little bit more about what she's doing for us.
Yeah, so right now, I'm working on the Workplace Giving Campaign initiative that Ellen's putting out. And I'm putting together pamphlets, which are little bookmarks that we're gonna be giving out around town. And I'm also putting together the Giving Tuesday campaign, which is another new thing that Ellen's put out this year.
Sorry, Bob seems to be honking at us.
And that's going to consist of flyers at the Turkey Trot and pamphlets that are gonna go out around town as well. So, that's what I'm working on right now.
Wow.
Yeah.
And just through November, is that what you said?
Through November, right.
Yeah, just to like December 1st. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, we passed public comment and as we modified the agenda, we are now ready for the first item of new business, review and action to accept the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
That time of year again.
Oh, we moved them. Oh, oh, sorry. Can I, why can't we just put them where they, where we really want them to be in the agenda?
Because we have an order in our agenda and so each time we alter, we need to request to change it. That's the formal way of doing it.
Okay, well, what I was thinking about on the way over was that if you were a regular citizen who had wanted to come to hear this, would you have known that it was going to be moved and would you be expecting...
If the agenda's out there and you look online, so our agendas are posted, so if you, gee, I think it's time to come here about the audit, so you could go to our website and see what the agenda would be. So, you would know ahead of time.
That they would be here, but you would know, would you know that they'd been moved up? So, if you were trying to not sit through a lot of stuff, that was my concern was...
The board would typically approve that, so for us to say it's going to be that way, we'd anticipate the board's action on that.
I mean...
I think we could take any direction the board would like to give.
You are making sense, but I, I'm sort of of the thought process that the agenda is published and if we have to make changes, we have to make changes.
But we always do it. I mean, it's not, it's not like it's a...
Well, we always do it when we have guests.
Right.
Right.
But we don't always have guests.
It's a courtesy sort of an approach, I suppose, if we chose not to or, you know...
Right. I mean, I'm happy to have, to not waste, have them waste their time, but I was just more thinking about the public having to, you know, come in and trying to time their visit while they're here on the agenda. I don't have to be there till...
Right.
And they get there and they're gone.
I guess it's a little hard to anticipate with the public, you know, will they be coming for the comment period, which is upfront?
Right.
Give them that advantage.
That's true, sure.
But if they choose or need to stay for the rest of the business, just as if we go to city council meetings, the agenda's set, just because the UPD is there, we wait in our turn. So, there's a situation where they just follow the agenda accordingly. They also would have a right to move people up.
True, to change things, yeah, yeah.
So, we just bring it to your attention when we think it's sort of courteous and appropriate.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. I just was curious why we had, why we couldn't make an annual exception and put them in a reasonable place for them on the agenda.
I think if the board asks us every time we do audit, assuming it's the same month, we could definitely arrange, and then we would want to, we could just automatically do it, but we tend to ask your permission and get the permission granted and then move people up.
That's what I should be.
We also, you know, let our guests know too, hey, we're gonna ask for you to be moved up, so plan on being there ahead.
Yeah.
So, I think it would be just, you know, a slight time change for a public if they were really desiring to hear a certain topic.
And not that we're usually mom, either.
Might have to wait a little bit, depending on what the topic.
Mm-hmm.
And again, if it's a bid on something, we do our bids toward the end of, they tend to be at the end of our meetings. So, again, we can do it however you'd like us to do it, but we just follow sort of the appropriate, you know, protocols and process.
I was just curious. I think it probably makes it easier for you if you've just gotta set Rota in. We just occasionally shuffle things. Okay.
I think we're ready.
Shall I introduce our guests?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us. We have Mark, Greg, and Rebecca. This is our audit team. So, these are the folks that came on site and did our fieldwork and have since helped produce this lovely report that's in front of you. I'll let them talk a little bit more about the process and the results of the audit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for inviting us to come and present tonight. Greg is going to cover the audit presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Rebecca's going to cover the letter. So, Greg, go ahead and get, get rolling.
Okay. First of all, I just want to let you know, a thousand words is always my, my goal. You know, you don't want to have more than a thousand words in a memo, nobody will read it. You don't want to have more than a thousand words in a presentation. When I looked at our outline, we had 1,014 words in it. So, I'm giving you permission not to listen to 14 words that Rebecca says. Otherwise, I'm gonna touch on the auditor's report and some new material that's in the big document that you have in front of you, bound document, and a few issues of interest to governmental boards. We're not gonna get into the detailed numbers because I know that Katie does a great job of keeping you up to date on those monthly. And the final numbers here really aren't that different from the monthly numbers that you've seen all year. So, first, I'm gonna go to the independent auditor's report, which appears on pages eight through 10. And these pages are what you actually pay us for. Our opinion on the financial statements and our opinion this year is what's called an unmodified clean opinion. And that appears in the third full paragraph of page nine. And that opinion is on the main financial statements, which are the exhibits that come in the front of the report. We also give an opinion on various schedules that support the main financial statements and that opinion appears on page 10 in the second to last paragraph. And that also is an unmodified opinion. Both of those are exactly what any board member would want to hear from their auditor, that they're getting an unmodified opinion. And that means a couple of things. Number one, it means that the financial statements and note disclosures are in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, which are the rules that all governmental entities are supposed to follow in the reports they produce. Secondly, it means that the documentation that we tested throughout our audit when we're out in the field and following fieldwork and even before fieldwork, supported those numbers and those disclosures that appeared before you tonight. So, again, that's exactly what a board member wants to hear, that they're receiving an unmodified opinion on their financial statements and note disclosures. We don't give an opinion on every single page in this document that you have in front of you. There's pages one through seven, I'm sorry. The introductory section of pages one through seven, the management discussion and analysis, which appears on pages 11 through 24. There's a couple of notes that we don't give opinions on, which are on pages 80 through 83. And then the statistical schedules at the end that go from pages 106 all the way to the end. We don't give opinions on those. They're required information to accompany your financial statements, but we don't give an opinion. We do read those and make sure that they're consistent with the financial statements that we are giving the opinion on, but we don't specifically test those schedules themselves. I also want to point out that within our auditor's report, there's a reference to the opinion that's given on the Urbana Parks Foundation, which is audited by a separate auditor and that auditor provided an unmodified opinion on their financial statements. We refer to it, but we are not the auditor of the Urbana Parks Foundation. Just want to point that out. Next, I want to turn quickly to the MDNA, which starts on page 11. This section is fully prepared by management. It's really their high-level view of the financial statements and the note disclosures. And in these 11 pages or so, it covers most of the very meaningful information that's on the remaining 80 pages of financial statements and disclosures that we give an opinion on. So, obviously, if you want to leverage your time on reading this big booklet, these pages here of the MDNA are very useful to a board member and any person in the public who's interested in the financial statements.
Could I ask you what you mean by note disclosure?
The note disclosures come after the exhibits. They start on page, let's see here.
What, what are they?
37.
Page 38 through 79. They just fill out the financial statements. The financial statements are just full of numbers and then the note disclosures give a little more explanation about the numbers.
Okay. So, it's not like a, you know, in the old days, a bank, you know, the bank was holding a note. It is, it is not that.
No, no. Okay. Next, I want to turn to Exhibit A, which is your first financial statement, your statement of net position, just a couple of different things this year on this statement. First of all, up in the assets section, you always had a line that was called, I'm sorry, internal balances.
Thank you.
Internal balances. And what that was, was the loan between the English Pool Fund and the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center. It was 250,000. It's been that for a number of years. This year, obviously with the new agreement with the school district, the nature of that line item sort of changed because it's no longer considered a loan between the one fund and the other fund. Now, there's a required deposit in the aquatic fund that it can actually, may not come back to the English fund at the end of this contract. It probably will, that's the estimation, but it might not. So, the nature of that financial transaction changed and now it's considered a prepaid expense on your government, governmental activities column on this page. And it's also considered an unearned revenue on the business-type activities column.
25.
And additionally, that went down to 125,000 this year because part of it was repaid during the year. So, that's something that's a little different than what you've seen in a number of years before this. Additionally, there's a new section down here called deferred inflows of resources. And what this is, it's related to your pension expense and the various balance sheet accounts that impact that expense. Last year, you adopted a new standard, Government Accounting Standard Number 68. And when you adopted that, it brought in the deferred outflows section up here right under your assets. It brought in your net pension liability, which is in your liability section. This particular new section, you didn't have any, anything that had to be displayed here last year. This is the first year that you have it. Additionally, in your net position section, the unspent tax levies, they've been broken out in a lot more detail this year, just a little better information for the reader of the financial statements of why those, or what those unspent tax levies are for in the future. Okay. Next, I'd like to jump to Exhibit D, which is page 28. Just one new number to point out here. In your capital projects column, about the fifth column to the right, you have a new line here called assigned. It's $500,000. And that was money that was transferred over from the general fund to the capital projects fund this year to be set aside for some projects at...
Crystal Lake.
Crystal Lake Park, yeah. So, that's a new line that's been set up this year. It's set aside money for that, those projects in the future. Next, I want to look at some of the, or actually, one of the note disclosures that had some new material this year. We adopted a new standard this year, Government Accounting Standard Number 72, and it impacted your deposits and investments note, which starts on page 50. And it added, added a whole section here about fair value measurements. And basically, this section runs into page 51 also. It gives you information about your investments and where they fall on a spectrum of fair value measurements. There's three levels of measurements and it, and it puts your investments in each one of those buckets, the ones that are valued at fair value. So, again, this was just related to an adoption of a new standard this year, a new disclosure-type standard. It didn't change your financial statements at all. Some of the other sections that you'll see in the booklet are on pages 80 to 82. These are required supplementary information related to your IMRF pension. Pages 83 provide required supplementary information related to your post-employment benefit. The remaining pages provide detail on individual funds, pages 84 through 104. So, if you want more detail on, even drill down farther than the financial stated exhibits, you go here. And then the statistical section, which is pages 105 to the end, that provides even more detail about the district and more informational material. Just want to point out that of all the pages that I've mentioned so far, there's really been no major changes in the formats, the note disclosures or those supplementary schedules, no major changes in the formats this year. Finally, I just want to bring up a couple upcoming standards, governmental standards that'll be impacting you in the next few years, sort of a near-term and a midterm and then a long-term situation. In the near-term, you've got a new government standard, Number 75, next year. I mentioned GASB 68 earlier. It's about your pension. It sort of took your pension liability that used to just be a note disclosure. There used to be this big ugly number in your note disclosures and to, last year, that was moved on to your financial statements. There's gonna be a similar situation with your post-employment benefit plan, which is the continuation of some medical benefits for retirees. So, that's gonna, that's currently a note disclosure. It actually is on page 71. You'll see a little table there. That 194,000 there that currently resides in your note disclosures, a number somewhat similar to that's gonna jump to your financial statements in two years. So, in fiscal year 19, that's gonna be on your balance sheet, some number, not necessarily that number, but somewhere in that neighborhood. So, that's coming down the road. Also coming down the road, but even two years farther out, there's gonna be a lease standard. The for-profit world is adopting that in two years. And then a couple of years after that, it'll be the governmental world's gonna be adopting. And basically, if you have any leases, the assets related to those leases are gonna go to your balance sheet and the commitment that you've made to the lessor is going to go to your balance sheet, too. So, that's coming down the road in about four years for you guys. And then way down the road, but it seems to always get here a lot quicker than we think, is gonna be a whole new reporting package. So, everything I talked about tonight will make no sense in about five years.
Uh-huh.
Actually, six to eight years won't make any, any sense.
Yeah.
Even less than it does tonight. I'd have no idea what that's gonna look like. They're, right now, they're doing comments and initial investigations on that. Dave Hood, one of the founding partners from our firm, always says, "If you want to know what's gonna happen in five years, just look back what they were doing, making you do 10 years ago." It sort of seems to circle around all the time. So...
The "they"?
Pardon me?
Who is the "they"?
Government Accounting Standards Board.
Ah.
Yeah, it's a nonprofit entity that sets the rules for governmental financial statements. And I mentioned earlier that the for-profit world, you know, was going through the lease and they also went through the fair value one, the one you adopted this year. They went through that a few years ago. So, they're related to each other, actually. I've always pictured their building having two wings, like two siblings fighting with each other. Look what I can do, look what I can do to them. So, anyway, so that's coming down the road and I'm sure Katie will have fun dealing with that when it gets here.
That's the full accrual idea, right?
It's, who knows? I had no idea what it is right now.
Yeah, I heard about it at a conference. I had my-
(laughing).
Okay.
Right.
I was like, hopefully, our new accounting software will be able to handle that because that's not how it's set up right now, so.
Okay. I think I'm at 999 words, so you'll have to be real brief.
One word? Okay. Okay, you should have a separate letter along with your report called the post-governance letter.
You probably don't have one.
May or may not have one. If not, I'll tell you the gist of it.
More to lots, right?
What's that?
Greg said one word.
Yeah. Hmm, I'll think about that. So this letter communicates to you how this audit went operationally. So if you look at the first page, the second paragraph there outlines what management's responsibilities were and would also report any major accounting policy changes and the adoption of any new accounting standards. There were no new standards in FY '17 that would have had a significant impact on UPD. Greg did mention the GASB 72, which created the fair value disclosure, but that was pretty limited to the notes, doesn't have any impact on your financials. If you turn to the second page, the first through the fourth paragraph on this page discusses significant estimates that were used by management, specifically the allowance for uncollectible property taxes, useful lives of property and equipment, the estimate of the liability for pensions, and then the estimate for the liability of post-employment benefits. We, as the auditors, looked through those estimates to assess the reasonableness of them and did not feel that any of the assumptions made by management were unreasonable. Also, on the second page, under the difficulties encountered in performing the audit, there were no difficulties encountered in performing this audit, so that's a good thing. The following section, the corrected and uncorrected misstatements, kind of summarizes the next, several pages that are attached to this letter. So at the back of this letter, you will find 14 portrait-style pages, which have reclassifying and adjusting journal entries that were made during this audit, some of which were given to us by Katie. And then following that, there are four horizontal pages, which are potential adjustments that were identified during the audit, of which management has chosen not to record. And they are not large enough for us to feel that they require to be recorded, so- The first and the third pages have current-year items. In addition to that, a portion of that item was booked this year and was recorded to the financial statements, so it just shows the remaining unrecorded portion. The second of those pages has only one current-year item, and the fourth page has one current-year item, as well as a current-year reversing impact of a similar item that would have been on these schedules last year. So turning back to the report, page three has a section for disagreements with management. We did not have any disagreements with management, if you can believe that. And so that takes care of kind of the bulk of what this letter is stating. So in general, we didn't have any issues, just kind of laying out the groundwork for what we used in our audit and what we were provided by management, and relaying that to the board. The Illinois Comptroller AFR is our next item that we'll be working on, which is the reporting to the state. So that comptroller filing just became available to us in the last couple of days online, so that's a work in progress coming up. It's due October 27th, but we don't expect any issues with being able to file by that deadline, so.
Mark?
That's about it. Lastly, we just want to thank, there's a lot of people that helped make this go smooth and participate on top of their normal jobs to give us the information we need to complete the audit. So special thanks to Tim Corky, Derek, Karen Sandy, Alex, and of course, Katie, for their assistance and the assistance of their staff members and their departments throughout the engagement. So any questions at this time?
Yes, I'm going to ask, so is unmodified the new term as opposed to, you used to give us an unqualified report, which always seemed wrong.
You have good memory.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think of you guys as being, living in the sort of other side of the looking glass, that's, you know, debit is credit, credit is debit, you know, it's all-
Thorough world, yeah.
No, I think it's just different.
And we don't even think of you as unqualified.
You know, you would expect, I mean, since we know you're qualified. But so is that the same?
Yes.
Okay, so they've just changed it, so it's not quite such a slur on your-
No.
Okay, good.
I do have one question, and you're welcome not to answer it, but one of the things looming over many governmental agencies are these retirement liabilities. And you did look and say, "Well, the assumptions seem reasonable," and I am not totally aghast at the numbers. They're not trivial, but are we in sort of the same boat as a lot of other people, or is things in pretty good shape since we're, IMRF kind of holds our feet to the fire pretty regularly for contributing?
I think any entity or any agency that was making their required payments is on pretty solid footing. I mean, obviously, after 2008, 2009, everybody took a hit. But I think you're around 80% funded now, aren't you, something like that?
IMRF as a fund? They say 86.
Or you, just your-
That was above that.
Oh, yeah, I think it's about that or above. Isn't it in here?
Yeah. And it is in there somewhere. In the private world, I believe 80% is the limit for what they consider to be well or satisfactorily funded. But obviously, one bad year with the market, it goes the other way. But the actuarial calculations that go into that IMRF number that appears in your financial statements sort of allows for those situations. They don't want giant spikes up and down for your expense every year, so they smooth those big years and those bad years. Those two weird numbers I mentioned, deferred inflows, deferred outflows, that's what those things do. They slow those big changes down and put them into your financial statements over a period of years. But I would say, overall, I mean, obviously, you know, you look at like TRS is 40% funded, something like that.
Eighty-one point nine-nine.
There you go.
On page 80.
All right. Good deal.
Good work.
So I would say, for the local governments that we deal with that are in IMRF, you're probably right where you want to be. Obviously, if you're over 100, it'd be terrific.
Greg and I have had conversations because IMRF allows you to make payments to them that aren't due. You can kind of prepay to write that net pension liability down, you know, so that it's not such a large number. And we have some fund balance in our IMRF fund. You know, we have targets for what we want it to be. But my question with Greg that we've talked about is, why don't we send any excess to IMRF? I mean, we can't send it anywhere else. IMRF monies are very restricted, and you can only keep them in your IMRF fund. And kind of Greg's idea or response to me about that was, invest your own money, you know, while it's yours, keep it until you need it.
Sure, that makes sense.
So, I mean, for now, I haven't really acted on that idea, although some of our other local entities are doing that. So it's something that-
So prepaying, you mean?
Yeah, they're sending extra payments. I don't know what they're called, additional payment? I don't know. They send them, you know, usually in December, but I know some of the other entities in Champaign County are doing that, so it's something I keep an eye on and think about.
So are there additional restrictions on how this money, that money can be invested, or does it fall in with the same-
It falls in with all of the rules that we have for all of our other governmental investments.
Problem I've always had with those is that you lose control of that money. It's out of your hands, and it doesn't, they can give you, potentially give you a waiver for future contributions, normal contributions, but they don't have to. So you could put that money in, and you could have big losses, and then you can still have to write that check every month regardless.
Yeah.
So I've never been a big fan of it. You know, you're sort of putting the money in the market, and if it goes down, it's gone, and you have a negative pension situation anyway that you would have been in anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that sounded right.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
No, I just want to say thank you, guys. I learn a lot from you, and I enjoy working with you and having you guys on as our auditors, so thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Yep.
Okay, now, we should take action to accept this-
Agenda. Oh, sorry.
The report.
How do we just say that?
I move to accept the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ended April 30th, 2017.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. I believe a voice vote is sufficient for this. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are now back to-
Boy, now I'm never going to want to do this. You have to keep the dog in place.
Moving back up in our agenda to the UpDAC report.
Roger's here tonight, so he'll give us a live presentation. Thanks for coming out.
Welcome. Such a lovely night.
I know, it is.
When UpDAC, prior to our last UpDAC meeting, the staff invited members of UpDAC to talk about what we felt were the three major challenges facing the district. And as you can expect, there was a wide variety, but Ellen did a really good job of putting that together. There was the usual stuff, finances, the situation with Brookins. What struck me, I think, is that the two things that were probably the most on UpDAC members' minds was diversity of people that we serve, but not just ethnicity, but also neighborhood, differing abilities, ages, and not only in programs, but also in staff, and particularly, full-time staff, that we felt that that should be a major thrust of the district. Then there was a person who had children in a school, who felt that the schools are not doing, at least the school that her children go to, are not doing a good job of getting kids outside, and wondered what the Park District might be able to do in terms of working with schools to encourage that to happen. So we greatly appreciated staff's willingness to engage us in conversation, explain a lot of things, tell us things that we didn't know about programs that were going on, and I thought it was an excellent discussion and gave us kind of some directions to move forward. And that's it?
Yeah, I second that. It was a good discussion.
Yep.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Well, again, thank you very much for coming out this evening, and I hope you found it enjoyable.
I did.
About the audit process.
I learned a lot.
Thank you. Thanks, Roger. Appreciate it.
It's like a foreign language. You kind of have to get in on that.
Okay, the next item of business is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda presented this evening, our approval of the minutes from the September 5th study session, the September 12th regular board meeting, the usual monthly reports from the three divisions, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and lastly, action to accept the philanthropy report and give us listed with gratitude. So again, under our rules, it's the purview of any single commissioner to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. Any commissioner who wants to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda. Hearing no such indication, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
Yes.
That's been moved-
Second.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so moved by Nancy Del Coman and seconded by Bob Stewart. So under the rules of our consent agenda, once we move forward, there is to be no further discussion on these ordinary housekeeping items. So we will start now with a roll call vote, and let's start remotely with Bob.
Aye.
And then-
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with the four commissioners voting.
Aye.
You can get another one in, okay. So we're moving on to the reports.
Hello.
Yep, we heard your "aye." Do you hear us? Ah.
Can you hear us, Bob?
Hey, Bob.
Nope.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
Did you get my "aye" or not?
Yes, we did.
We did, yes.
Okay, all right.
Great.
Okay.
So we're on to financial reports.
Okay. So you get to hear me talk a lot tonight with the audit and then my financial reports and the levy as well, so.
And this is the first time, I think it's in color.
Oh, well, Allison printed it for us, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, it was really noticeable.
Apologies.
No, no.
It's fine.
Did you like it better?
It makes it stand out.
Yeah, I thought it was a lot easier to read.
I actually keep those items all red for myself because that way I make sure to update the numbers of the number of months and the pluses and minuses of the difference, so it draws my eye to those areas of the report, so.
I thought it was really, I thought it was really useful. Uses up a little bit of red ink in the tank, which doesn't probably get used a lot anyway.
Yeah, Kelsey's gone, sorry.
No, I think it's, I would be happy-
It's a good innovation. We're doing our best. A good change.
Yeah, we made it through, I think, all right.
And I think this is better. I would vote for keeping it this way. I like it better this way.
Okay. So tonight, I'll be talking to you about the performance of the Urbana Park District for the month of September that we just finished. I'm going to present two budget reports for you. The first is called the Fund Balance Report. This report presents the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the five months ending September 30th. Some 1 is the first page of this report. This page presents all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for this period were $7,601,000, which is an increase of $1,643,000 since August, excuse me. $6,412,000 was property taxes, and I say it again and again, but I feel like maybe it's useful for those watching on TV, but the majority of our revenues are received in the summer months when our property taxes, payments are due in June and September. And so our revenues are always very front-loaded towards the beginning of the year, and property taxes make up approximately 70% of our operating budget. Expenditures were $3,417,000, which is a change of $694,000 since August. We have a surplus after five months, and this means there was an excess of revenues over expenditures of $4,184,000, and net change in fund balance shows an increase after five months of $4,184,000. Moving on to page two, some 2 shows only the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for five months were $162,000, and expenditures were $424,000. Expenditures exceed revenues, and this means there was a deficit of $262,000, and a net decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $262,000 at this point in the year. And finally, some 3, it just takes some 1 and some 2 and adds them together, so I don't need to summarize all of that, but I like to draw your attention to the bottom-line number of the fund balance at the end of September is $10,357,000. So if the year were to stop right here at this exact moment, that's what our fund balance would be right at this moment, with the revenues we've already received at this point in the year and the expenditures we've incurred. Moving on to the next financial report. Moving on to the next financial report. This is the Budget Analysis with History Report. This report shows a historical comparison of the same five-month period of the current year and the prior three years. So, we're at 42% of the year at this point, so you can kinda see that a little bit throughout the report. Highlights of this report include, um, the first section of this report, the first three pages is all funds district-wide. If you move to the middle of page 2, you can see that revenues plus transfers in for this five-month period were $7,844,000, and we've received 96% of our property tax payments at this point. So, the majority, we get a couple trickling payments, the last final, the final payment's received in November, and then sometimes we get like a mobile home payment and a airport payment, but they're really small. Um, let's see, where was I at? You can see, starting at the middle of page 2, where the expenditure section starts, the expenditures are running ratably or better than the prior year. I was comparing this and kinda doing some analysis, so you can see, for example, part-time salaries, dollar-wise and percentage-wise were lower than the last two years. So, which is good, I mean, I think it shows that we're finding some efficiency at the pool, now that we've kinda figured it out after a few years, because the pool's where most of our part-time staff budget is going.
So, that's mostly lifeguards, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, and I think that the first year, we didn't really have enough staff, and then the second year, we had, I don't know if we had more than enough. Leslie says she hires pretty much everyone that applies, so, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a challenge to make sure that facility's fully staffed, but it could be a matter of overtime, you know, because if you don't have enough staff, then you're having to staff them extra hours and maybe paying more for that. So, I think, I think it's showing that we're finding some efficiency of operations there, it's my guess.
And my guess is the weather makes a difference too, so if you've got a lot of days where there's a thunderstorm, where the, you know, in the middle of the day and your people are, are having to go home, I mean, I think there's just, there's a whole lot of things that probably affect that.
Mm-hmm.
If it's mostly lifeguard stuff.
Yeah. And so, we're seeing similar trends also in supplies and equipment. Um, you know, you, you kind of expect your full-time salaries to go up a little bit each year. We know we've gone up in contractual services with some of the contracts that we've taken on, for example, with our custodial services and some other things, so that's expected. Insurance goes up every year as well, so, moving on to page 3, sorry. But, as far as consistency goes, we're doing very well, and if you look at the total bottom line of expenses, you can see we're at $3,922,000 for the year, which is pretty consistent with the prior three years, considering things that have gone on, and the majority of that excess over the prior years is in the Capital Improvements Fund, which is always fluctuating just depending on what projects are going on. So, so, the bottom line of that is, we have a surplus at the end of September of $392,000, or, sorry, $3,922,000. And moving on to the Treasurer's Report, unless you have any questions about the Budget Analysis with History Report. The Treasurer's Report is a report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, September 30th, 2017. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested for a grand total of $12,966,816. Page 2, I've rearranged this report a bit, you'll see why in a minute, and I'll talk about it, but the top section still lists investments, which is as usual, so, of that $12,91,000 that we have, $10,440 is in investments. And our investments haven't changed very much since last month, other than that when we get our property taxes, they go automatically into that Chase Savings Account, so that one always goes up, because we get a slightly higher interest rate there, so we try to keep them there while we're working on other investments with that money or working on spending it. The next section in this report now lists inter-fund loans. This section is shorter, for one, because of what Greg talked about, about the inter-fund loan for the indoor aquatic center, and so, even last month, when I presented this, we still had an inter-fund loan for the aquatic center, for our $125,000. And it was after the board meeting, sometime in late September, that we made that change, actually all the way back to April 30th. So, starting April 30th, actually all of last fiscal year, but with the financial statements that ended April 30th, we no longer have an inter-fund loan between the English Fund and the indoor pool. Now, we have a prepaid expense in the English Fund and a, uh, unearned revenue in the indoor aquatic center. So, you won't see that as an internal balance any longer on this report, and unless the pool needs more money than they have, which we did have to do, and, but that inter-fund loan will come from the Recreation Fund, not from the English Fund. So, the, and I just want to reiterate what Greg already said, but there's been a change in the loan between the English Fund and the indoor pool. The character of this $125,000 changed with the new agreement that we entered into. Prior to this agreement, the loan was a voluntary internal decision to loan an amount between funds for current cash flow needs, but once that new agreement was signed, and UPD had to match USD's $125,000 contribution deposit under the contract, the 125 was no longer subject to a voluntary internal decision, but was now tied to this external agreement. And so, we accepted the school district's 125, you know, they sent it to us in June or July as soon as that agreement was signed, and we booked it as an unearned revenue in our books at that time. And the auditors and I just had a discussion in September, this, just last month, where we kinda just agreed, it would be, make a lot more sense for those two 125s to match in our books. And so, it didn't really change any totals, I mean, all, our balance sheet still comes to the same total as all balance sheet accounts, but we just decided to book, you know, an asset and, and a liability in a different way. So, so instead of having a due-to, we have a prepaid, instead of having a due-from, we have an unearned revenue. So, after discussion with the auditors, we reclassified this loan as a prepaid expense in the English Fund deferred revenue and the indoor, indoor pool fund. And this change was actually effective April 30th, and it was the last change we made to the CAFER before we finalized it. So, it made, it made a lot of changes to my MDNA too, so I had to go back and change my stuff, but I think we like the way that it came out and, you know, going forward, but I definitely wanted to explain that change to the board, because it's something you hear me say every single month, that this is a loan for the indoor pool, and so I'm not gonna say that anymore, and it'll just stay on our books, and you'll see it in the audit, um, as a prepaid, but it's not gonna be something that we communicate about, unless they need more money, in which case you may see occasional, you know, $50,000, $100,000 from rec fund loaning, if the pool needs money towards the end of the year usually, that, that's happened in the past. So, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. So, with that, I was able to consolidate the inter-fund loan section onto page 2, and I was able to put all of the dispersment section onto page 3, make, instead of having it split on a page. And this final section on page 3 lists dispersments, and vendor payments match the paid accounts payable on the consent agenda that you already received, and total dispersments of funds equal $717,000 this month.
It's a little high because of triple payroll?
We had triple payroll, and it's just end of summer wrap-up and beginning of fall program startup. Next month's gonna be high too, because we have our insurance payment, so, we pay our iParks policy in October, so you should expect that. November should be low, and then December's our bond payments, so that'll be really high. So, that's our bond principal and interest payments. Okay, so, with that, I present the Treasurer's Report to you for approval.
I move accept the Treasurer's Report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You there Bob?
I hear you, yeah, aye.
Alright, so that's four ayes and no nays.
Great. I'll touch briefly on the supplemental report of cash. This supplemental report of cash has the same information as the first page of the Treasurer's Report, but it groups the information differently by expected use rather than by fund name. Daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations are the three categories that we break the, the report into. You can still, still see the same total of, our total cash of $12,91,000, that's the amount of dollars that the district has. $1,268,000 is restricted, leaving $10,823 available as spendable cash. And I'll touch now on the areas of activity in the capital budgets. So, in the 2017 capital budget, you can see the areas with an asterisk are highlighted where there's been activity. In this budget, we received revenue for tributes and donations, and in the expenditure section, ADA funds were used for designs for the James Room Kitchen Rehab. Expenditures also were incurred on tributes. A field kit for Crystal Lake was purchased from Operations Small Equipment. Construction costs were incurred on the Larson Park Tennis Court, and UPD expensed its share of capital repairs at UIAC, and vehicle decals were purchased for district vehicles, and asbestos testing occurred at Binkard in preparation for demolition.
How are we doing on the tennis court?
Andy?
The Larson is completed.
Oh, good.
Um, we had a final walkthrough with BCA and did everything checked out.
Was that in September or October?
That was in September.
So, the, that might be finalized, I'm not sure if there's more we're expecting, but...
There's, we should have another bill.
One more.
One more bill, okay. How, have you, have you seen it after the rain?
No, I haven't.
I mean, because wasn't one of the problems was the soggy-ness of the ground?
Drainage, yeah, yeah. Um, we, it's, it's, it's got Velcro and suspenders plus something else.
Velcro.
Yeah. And to the credit of the contractor, no pooling water on the surface either. Really good job.
Oh, great, yeah.
Color cutter didn't have to do any filling of holes, so...
Great.
It's a, it's a really good job.
Super. Glad to hear that.
So would the neighbors.
I bet they are, they were probably watching with rackets in hand.
In the 2016 capital budget, this month, we received a donation from the Ambucks Club for two benches that were installed in the park in 2016. So, our capital budgets are by calendar year, and we try to match the tributes and donations expenses up with where the revenue was incurred, and in this case, we incurred the expenses before we received the revenue, so we kept those together still in this budget. And, on the expenditure side, we incurred expenditures on construction crew projects, technology funds were spent on the PRC media player, Crystal Lake improvements funds were spent on water quality consulting and on, also on renderings. And lastly, in the 2015 capital budget, expenditures occurred towards plant plugs for the nature playscape, and, and also on the rain garden project, which I think was for site monitoring or, is that what it's called?
And watering, it was a watering and maintenance.
Maintenance.
They, they did some herbicide applica-, two herbicide applications as well during that period for the sedge plantings in the middle, that was a redo.
So, with that, Andy and Derek may have some additional updates for you on capital projects.
Yes, I do. Katie mentioned the Binkard site, I'm gonna start with that. We did have the asbestos testing came back, I think I mentioned before that we did have some asbestos at the site. That work is expected to be completed by the end of this month. Demo is gonna be pending a approval of the board, an ordinance for disposal of property that will be taken to you at the November meeting. Once that is approved, we can proceed with the demo of that. I did meet with Representative Frompaka yesterday out there to have a look for any salvage materials, there wasn't a lot, but there were some, so, we'll make sure we get them taken care of as well before we get the, the site demoed. We're currently working through an agreement for engineering with BCA and the King Courts project, you'll see it in the draft 2018 budget. This includes maintaining the western tennis court, the eastern tennis court, the northern half will be half-court basketball, the southern half will be bank shot basketball, which includes 13 different stations, it's various orientations of basketball hoops at heights and different backboards. So, we're hoping to bid that out in January. I wanted to note that...
Yeah, just on that, I was gonna talk about the fact that we took that to King School students.
Mm-hmm.
We took it to Jettie Rhodes Day.
Right.
We took it to the Ucap meeting.
Yep.
At the Ucap meeting, and the bank shot basketball is pretty popular, so...
Just a little, it's a choice, and it was, it was fun at the school, watching the kids try to select between each one, they, they were really studying it pretty hard and lobbying the other students.
Oh, really?
And then at, at, at Jettie Rhodes Day, that's where we, we heard, maybe there still is some interest in tennis there, where there was still a few appeals to, 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 to keep it, not a lot, but a few, and so, we'll, we'll keep it there for the time being, just give it, as a chance to evaluate and see. Certainly, you know, the bank court basketball and half court would be very popular.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't wait.
At Jettie, I'm sorry, at Ucap, just joy, I mean, it's something they've been hoping for, for a long time, and so, just a lot of enthusiasm for basketball and that.
Yeah, yeah.
I did wanna note some work that will be done this week, Thursday and Friday, the Nature Center outdoor pool parking lot will be resealed, it'll be a full closure of the parking lot, all staff have been noticed, and Nature Centers, and our, our marketing staff, Dana is working for, has been doing some public information to make sure we get the information out. Also, Saturday, the Rafe Street parking lot at Meadowbrook will be resealed, which will necessitate a closure of that as well. Derek has arranged for some overflow parking north of Judy's House, our parkhouse there, so we'll still be able to provide some parking for the site, for the gardeners. That has also been communicated to the organic garden users, so...
Any of my just mentioned on that one, that we worked with an intern to research alternate sealant products.
Oh, right.
We, the ones that are commonly used in our area have coal tar, it's one of the contributing items to our contam-, our sediment.
Yeah.
And that was challenged, and in the end, we, we are selecting a product, it's, it's called an asphalt emulsion, it's, it's, it's a, it's still a product that a lot of contractors are familiar with, comfortable applying, it's, it's not one of the newer, more, you know, recently emerging products. We did look at several of those, but several of them required that you put it on fresh asphalt, new asphalt.
Uh-huh.
They're really more of a clear product as opposed to a, a dark product, and so, there are some people that don't like the aesthetics, but we feel confident this is a product that's been tried a number of applications and will be a good one for us, and won't contaminate our soil and water and provide a concern for kids being exposed to the product.
Yeah, good.
Last thing I'll mention is we're awaiting a proposal from Ratio for some work at the outdoor pool. This would include adding changing stalls and the women's and men's locker rooms. Also, the glue lamp beams, the ends of them have faded, I guess is a good way to put it, so they'll, they'll be addressing some, some ways to aesthetically improve the, the beams that you see there. Additionally, they're, they're looking into new lockers, outdoor lockers, the current lockers have, we have some issues with the locks, losing the keys, we also have some fading and warping that we're seeing there, so we're looking for a better product that's made for the outdoors, and potentially, changing our locks. We could stick with the keys, we may discuss doing kind of a PIN code that a user could set themselves as well, so...
Hope they don't hit their head between the time they do it.
When we, when we first purchased the lockers, the keys, replacing the keys didn't seem like a big challenge.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't an expensive thing, but they are very expensive to replace.
Yeah, that's what Joseph was telling me, that you can't just go to, to the locksmith place and get, and get them.
And you order them and it takes like two months to get them.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he was saying.
The full season's over with, so it doesn't help us much.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that Leslie and her staff are also concerned about the, the keys down the slides, and they're constantly watching for that, and sometimes the kids just drop it down the slide tower, and probably where a few of our lost keys have gone.
Oh, man.
We're, we're gonna bet this one pretty carefully before we...
Yeah, yeah. Well, we saw it when we did our recreation tour, I mean, I know those were indoor ones, but they were primarily keypad ones, weren't they?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's what I have in my house, makes it a whole lot easier getting in and out, I never have to think about keys, so, yeah.
That's it, unless you have some questions, or Derek wanted to mention anything?
Do we, Tim, did you wanna talk about some of the discussions we've had about the KRT at, at this point, or...
I thought I'd do it in my report.
Okay, very good.
Just, either one, we're right next, so...
Alrighty, I guess we're, we're ready to move on to the Executive Director's Report.
Great, just a couple of things, I want to thank Martin Hood-Freezy for the great job they do for us each year. Katie and her staff do a terrific job, I think there's a lot of sharing back and forth and learning in that process, so, I think we're all happy to work with each other, and I think we get our value from that. So I think we're all happy to work with each other and I think we get our value from that.
How much longer is our contract with them?
This was the first of three years, or maybe it was the second of three. I'd have to look, I don't know.
Alright, so it is, but it's a three-year contract?
It was a three-year.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's...
At least one more.
It's great because you have a working relationship with them, but that's also not great because you wanna have somebody with fresh eyes coming in, so...
Yeah, which Rebecca was the supervisor of our audit and she was new. So she was really the one on site.
Yeah, yeah.
And having the consistency of Greg, I mean, is actually amazing.
Oh, yeah.
And Mark, you know. So it's nice they're able to change out the people on the ground, you know, that are really there. So, and yeah, it's been really a good experience for me.
Yeah, and I mean, I've been really satisfied with the work that they've...
Definitely. Also, we had a terrific staff fall retreat out at the 4H camp at Allerton Park. I think everybody had a really good day. Did a little bit different activity. We did a Titanic boat building exercise where we worked in teams of about five or six, seven people.
Building a boat that will sink, is that...
But the goal was to get it across the lake. And I think every, I think we only had one that semi-sank, it made it most of the way.
Okay, well, so whose was it? That's what we wanna know. I want to know, I'm hoping it was you guys.
It wasn't Derek's or Tim's.
No, no. And I think Derek's group actually won. The Rays Corky was second because they did an alternative rope pull, which I think was completely illegal, but...
Two different categories, we won our category. We were the only one in our category, but we won.
But it was really a lot of fun, I think a lot of sharing, a lot of good opportunity. It was a little bit different, different venue, so it kinda mixed it up. So we had a really, really good time. I think Elsie covered some of the Welcome Week Immigration Forum things. Just wanted to thank Urbana School District for including us in that terrific soccer event. I was able to go out, perfect day, of course, a few Saturdays ago, and I think it was homecoming last week. And really nice crowd there, a lot of fun, a lot of faculty, families playing, and so really terrific. Hope we can grow and build that. Again, I included some information in the director's report on the Coalition, specifically with the Youth Assessment Center. I hope you looked at those statistics. And obviously, the concerning news is the Champaign School District has provided an independent, separate building at no charge or low cost, just the utilities, for the Youth Assessment Center. But they need that space back, I'm anticipating, assuming with the school moving and things. So they're looking for a home. Obviously, we don't have immediate space. I think there are a number of sites, you know, mentioned. Brookins was one of the sites mentioned. But Julia Reed's reminded us that we're really unique because I think Champaign County is the only county that has a separate, and she'll let me know if I said that wrong, but I believe of 102 counties, we have a separate youth assessment. Now, there are other programs that house similar types of programs, but to have an independent. And again, the goal, real important thing, I wanna linger a second. Obviously, the goal with the Youth Assessment Center is to engage the young people when they first come in, create options. I think that's where we come in. We're part of that option group. Can we divert, get people connected, give them another, you know, alternative? And then lastly, solutions. So it could be, we've resolved this, we started here. But it's made a terrific impact, and I hope you notice some of the young people.
I was appalled by that.
So I think when we look at the work of what Parks and Recreation is doing, you know, that's kind of our new target audience of how do we get people even younger? So things like Walk as One and getting pre-kindergarten kids ready, it's not too early, you know, to start doing those things. So again, we're making some successes. As much as you succeed, you see, like any plateau, there's new areas you have to start working on. So we're hopeful, somebody might be able to help out with the Youth Assessment Center, providing a space. We'll see. I also was invited by Sam Smith, who's in, works with us in Coalition-related issues and working with underserved primarily. He works at Cranert Center. But there was a new, there's a new Mohamed Aquifer exhibit that's in downtown Champaign that was done by a lot of U of I grad students, lots of Champaign School kids. But basically, there were two storefronts that opened up near, between Soma and I think Meyer Draperi in that downtown shopping plaza off Neil.
Yeah, one of them's Studio, it's, the buildings are both owned by Studio Helix feet.
Right. And so they've opened up that space and using all recycled materials have reconstructed an entire giant exhibit room of a model of the underground makings of the Mohamed Aquifer. So I was very excited, and I think the Champaign Schools had their group there, Dr. Sola was there and they were all talking.
Is it just new?
Just opened, I think.
Okay, 'cause I was, it'd be nice if there was something in the paper about that.
Yeah, I think it's, that might have been one of the first, like, what I'd call public nights, where there was a group there, you know, learning about it. But hopefully, we can get our maybe splash kids and kids, maybe camp kids, it'll be open for a good while. But it was really remarkable, I learned a lot. You know, when you try to talk about things underground, visualization is really difficult, right? So to be in the space and actually see how the rainwater flows and where the contaminants come in and how they accumulate was very powerful. And what they're doing, obviously, is trying to promote people to think about our resources and our water supply. And so kudos to them and appreciate the invite from Sam to be able to see it. Planning staff were working ahead, working at the Wondell Sculpture Garden, been working specifically with the Wondell family. The interest is to create a council ring, deal with some of our sign standards, and create an information place to recognize sculpture or art-related donations. So we'll be coming back to you with some images, but we wanna meet with Jeff when he's free and start going over that. We're real excited, we think we have a nice defined look. It really fits into our interpretive plan, using borrowing ideas from that, working with Ratio Architects on how to pull that together. So could be very exciting and I think it's gonna be very visual. Also, on sculpture, we've got two coming and two leaving. Nicole Beck's Sunstruck will be leaving and Bruce Namies Tall Six Two. And we'll be acquiring a different piece from Nicole Beck, I think it's King of the Prairie Lantern. And Michael Young's Two in the Hand will come. So that's, one's, two are tomorrow, one's leaving and one's coming. And then we'll schedule with Nicole later when she's free. So it's nice to always see fresh work there and gets people back out and talking about that. I think at the last director's roundtable, that was in Hollis Park District, by the way, I didn't know where that was. It's a very small town near Peoria. I think it's about 250 population, but they have quite a nice park district, several lakes, large expanses of property. I'm sure they have an interesting history. You may have heard of one of their parks, they've created a Wizard of Oz Park. So it's an actual recreation of the Wizard of Oz, including the house and the cornfields and the twisters and all of that, done in a big giant playground. It's pretty neat, if you have family you'd like to go somewhere interesting. Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S.
In a community of 250 people.
I believe that's what the sign said, which leads me to...
Where does their money come from?
And I'm sure it's, you know, an interesting story. I don't know all of their detailed background, but it's quite a bit of interesting land and resources there. I mean, quite beautiful.
There's some big caterpillar magnet living in Hollis.
Might be. But Jason Anselment was there and he always does an update. I think a couple of things to keep in mind, obviously, there is anticipated a lot of legislative turnover. I think it's anticipated about 25% at this point, it could go higher, but people either retiring, not running, choosing not to run. So I think Jason's word is, if you have new people, make sure you're talking with them, you know, get informed. If they're not changing, continue to talk to your legislators to be advocating for you. And I think he alluded to a potential bill that he was watching that, I can't quote the House bill or the Senate bill, and it may just be in committee, but he was saying keep an eye on it. But one of those, there's probably been other bills. But basically, that, based on the number of voters in your last election, a certain percentage could do away with any local units of government. So he used the example of Hollis Park District, which has 250 people, the number of people that voted, that small percentage could result in a handful, you know, less than a dozen of people that could vote a park district or any other district, for that matter, out. So we just wanna keep an eye on those things. Can't say more about that. At Weaver Park, I think staff has finally concluded we do want to move forward with an ITAP application that'll be due December 1st. And I think our hope and expectation is we need to get some staging, parking facilities on that north end of the park. So we were asking if we can get the engineering of that done, to figure out where are the utilities? How do you bring them in? Where are the sources? How do we start to develop that site? And so it might be a lower-cost ask. We know there are probably a number of stacked applications here in Champaign County. So we'll have, you know, there's always competition throughout the whole program and then in your local region. But we feel compelled to do that, it's certainly a need. And we think the timing of that particular thing is ideal because we do need that information. You know, we could hire and pay for, you know, that if we needed it, but we'd like to at least try to look at that grant application. We are still waiting for the results and information. In fact, I think we're doodling for a meeting on the transportation study to hear back from RPC on what they gathered. Early in the year, we were hopeful and thought maybe we could make an application based on that, but we really need to get that information, analyze it, decide. It certainly could be used for future grants. But we didn't want to let a grant app round slide by without making a pitch. So we'll be working on that to get that done.
Did you wanna mention the city's work on Main Street?
Yes, I think I sent the board information of the improvements that have been done on East Main Street with the striping and the half crosswalk at Main Street. I think I sent you the diagram. So we're really pleased that work's been done and I think it makes a huge difference. I mean, it looks like a system, you know, that you would see out there. So really appreciate Public Works' effort to do that quickly. You know, obviously, other groups could have decided to wait or get more information or study it or what have you, but they saw an opportunity and a need, so we're very appreciative of that. Having, working with Elsie and Corky, we met with a cyclocross group that's very interested in trying to establish a course somewhere at the park district. Elsie, of course, has been very modest of her energy and things she's involved with. But I did just wanna mention that because sometimes we think underrepresented, we might think, I think Corky already mentioned it, but you know, your minorities are, we're really trying to look at other people that are, that don't have a place at the table. They're either, they're interested in something, they wanna see something started, they have some energy, can get some resource, but they're just not visible like your mainstream sort of activities and facilities. That's not to say we're gonna be able to do that with anybody that contacts us, but we're trying to look at what fits with our systems, what are we likely to be able to do and help, and then what can't we do? And how do we either redirect them to somebody that can or try to modify it in a way that, you know, we might be able to say yes somewhere? So we'll get more information on that as well. Let's see. We've had a recent meeting with the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District on some possible changes at Ambucks in the plant, what they're trying to do there. MTD is interested in also trying to create a crosswalk over to Ambucks Park.
Oh, good.
And so they're looking at a mid-block crossing on Route 150 and trying to get to that corner at Cottage Grove, so anticipating if they're able to do that first, how would our future loop trails loop in and fit into that? I think that also led to a number of other, you know, discussions about how to improve Cottage Grove to the plant. How do we make that west edge of the park, you know, look more attractive? Do we do something, you know, with signage that could work for the park and for the sanitary district? Tree plantings. They're also looking at the potential of working with the compressed natural gas as a fuel source for MTD buses. So somewhere in that plant, there needs to be a refueling station and an opportunity to get some alternative, you know, energy sources going. You know, our discussion was, you know, maybe if that goes, that's something we could look toward in the future? Do we have an application? It really depends on what type of, you know, mobile transit system or vehicles you're trying to move. But certainly, we're encouraging of any other alternative, more green sources, 'cause it's a byproduct of what they produce there. So it's another way to use that. So we're, I guess, in the boil down, can we all three work in a cooperative way to improve the, you know, their operation at MTD, the sanitary district's plant, Ambucks Park, and some of the things the neighborhood think are important in that area? So we're also working with the foundation on, you know, is there a possible way to find more opportunities, get maybe at least even the short loop trail in, working with the club as well. We know Tom Burns has been interested, so we're continuing to talk to him about any help he might be able to provide, you know, with planning, design, or engineering, or any other resource that might come out of that. But we're really excited about that because it's really bringing some new energy to that area. I think the residents definitely will benefit from that, the employees that work at both of those plants, visitors to the park. We're looking at cooperative opportunities at the Hickory Street site that, you know, if we can help do anything, we even were able to talk about a potential future crossing over the saline that would link to get us, you know, connected with the Perkins site and perhaps Ambucks. I think that one will take a little more time, obviously, but there's probably a physical way to do it. And we're really appreciative of the sanitary district 'cause they're very open. They're able to talk about those ideas and they're not, they don't shy away from, you know, some of the harder aspects that we might have to encounter. I think that was all, and we did wanna take a few minutes to give you an update on what we've been working with really since last May, just the background, and then we'll direct you to the screens. Last May, we started working with the forest preserve on, with the KRT coming to us and our big plans at Crystal Lake Park, really kinda did, started thinking, gee, you know, we talk about it a lot and the forest preserves talk about it a lot, it's in the newspaper, but do our peers, do our partners know a lot about either of those projects? So we took some time, set up an event, we had our staff and the forest preserve staff over at the lake house in early May, realized we had a new mayor that also might not know all these things. We had the Urbana Business Association invited Carl, a number of, you know, leaders in Parks and Rec, your foundation sorts, but to come and hear both of the districts' projects and, you know, doesn't make sense. How does it grab you? What kind of donor appeal? If you were a donor, how would you respond? Before we really get into a, you know, further launch and start engaging with people. I think the outcome was a lot of positive feedback. I think everybody saw the two projects very viable. So as a result, I was talking with Diane Marlin afterwards, and she was saying that she would be talking with, she had met with Carl Hospital and talked about a variety of things, and she recalled some of our connectivity topics that we shared at that meeting and came back to us and said, yeah, they, you know, Carl expressed some interest in hearing more about what other sort of in-town trail connections. So we took that opportunity really to develop a series of images that, what we kinda call really connecting Crystal Lake Park with downtown, but really evolving around the Carl Campus, Crystal Lake Park, and the downtown core area. You know, there are three strong entities, certainly a lot of people attraction to all three of those areas. So it's a way to make better connections. So I'm gonna stand up and Derek will flip through the slides and I'll give you a little information. We wanted to talk with the board because we're kinda working in an exploratory way, but as we talk with more people, we certainly wanted the board to be informed or have some input. So just kinda looking, Derek, go back to the last one. Obviously, you can kinda see the three main areas, Crystal Lake Campus, we know they own other properties, but it kinda just sort of bubbled the core area and then the downtown. But, you know, for a long time, we, staff has talked about, how do we get more action with people walking, biking, you know, at Crystal Lake Park, the various aspects to our downtown core area? We also know there's a variety of other, you know, ways to get around University Avenue. This yellow line represents this idea of a continued KRT. Could it come further into Urbana? You know, we've talked about this for at least four or five years, maybe longer. I think our very first countywide Greenway Plan, we talked about what I call the Green Line. This idea of, okay, we know the KRT may come someday, but what about all this vast landscape that is in our downtowns? Wouldn't it be cool if downtown Urbana someday could be connected with downtown Champaign? Create those really high-style, you know, inner urban corridors like the High Line in New York with the 606 in Chicago. There's other communities that have them, but those were sort of like models. So we first reminded people, let's not forget about Crystal Lake. One of our immediate trail improvements will be the Park Street path that will be added and as well as the engineering study to take it up to the saline. That portion would also follow. Then we have loop trails that go around the park, some short loops in the West Woods, likely or perhaps soft trails in the blue that might get people, again, up close to the lake, walking where they really want to go. So there's a number of features built into each of these amenities, but it really gets you around the major portion of that southern section of Crystal Lake Park. Obviously, we're gonna highlight some of the, you know, before and afters. Certainly, we're familiar with this. This is that area right off Broadway, just south of the saline, which we thought had a lot of potential. And I think you might recall, earlier, we were, looked at maybe the corner of Park and Broadway and realized not enough real estate, kinda noisy and crowded. There's always, there's already some traffic... there's already some traffic issues there. What if we pulled it off into another area, created a nice little seating and destination? So you're familiar with that. Again, easy to get there on bike. Here's Cannonball Hill, so you can picture the events that normally go on down there. Certainly the lake views here, that enhanced lake edge, the tree plantings. Am I blocking your views?
No, I said, there's no honeysuckle in this.
Exactly. So, you know, I think something I noticed with a lot of the diagrams, people are actually looking out at the water, which I think is awesome and that's what we want to be able to do. Certainly another view looking out, we call this the old beach cove, that area, but again, you can see failing older trees, a lot of invasives sort of corralling, you know, the iconic dock with everything thrown at it to keep the geese at bay. With another look, certainly sort of a, you know, using that nice, you know, stone material to create a terrace seating area to get people down the water, enhanced landscape, trail pathways that get you up there, looping you back through the park. Certainly a little more attractive up close, right down to the water edge, which again, that's where people want to be. This is sort of the experience today and we hope to transition that. So again, get this nice, you know, sort of buffer planting, deal with some of the wildlife and attract the appropriate type and maybe just deter some of the other types or transfer from, you know, geese to duck.
I see the incoming airplane.
This would be coming down the hill, making that turn on that west lot over to the lake house. So you can see how that, you know, would fit into there. And again, trails that lead you off around the lake areas. And then again, sort of pulling that road, edge of road and these sort of other access points down to the rock or lake that are just sort of rock edge to try to hold, hold the tow. Obviously, it could be transitioned to a kayak launch area. We always continue to promote, you know, this idea of is there a way to share the road? Have a lane that could be auto-oriented and another lane or trail that could, you know, accommodate bikes and pads. Again, new activities brought to the site could be a very different look. And then again,
That's nice.
Sediment basin on that side, that short loave that picks up and collects a lot of the sediment. Here's the Weir Wall Bridge and then a view of the lake right behind, you can't really see it. I think there was a picture in the paper today, if you all saw, of the horseshoe fountain and kids playing there. You can't really see them, it would be behind that. So to be able to transition that, again, completely open it up, naturalize it, get that nice stone material in there, create more habitat areas, places for people to sit. We like to think about re-facing the bridges to open them up, make them all look the same because we have a number of bridges in the park. Again, those things could be done over time. And then more recently, we've been working with, we threw this in just for fun as we talked to groups, worked with the JJR Smith Group on lake house, that's sort of its own separate phase, but things we know already about the lake house is in pretty good shape. We've got the nice roof, we've resided it, it's in pretty solid shape. It seemed unlikely to staff we would ever enlarge it or try to go vertical. Those were some early ideas in our strategic plan because it's such a tight site and you don't have a lot of real estate. So we sort of flipped the equation, so what if we enhance the outdoor area? Kept the building, but we worked with landscape and the docks and the decking in a way to, again, pull that stone look in, create a better entrance from the east parking lot. Right now, you can't really see the lake house, it's pretty overgrown. Open that up, work with that hill behind the lake house, again, stone retainers, adding native plants and things that sort of fit that palette that we see at Crystal Lake, you know, pool and throughout, you know, the edges of that. Focusing on areas for performance, we still haven't figured out a good shade application, that's a first attempt, but shade is really important. I learned that, I think, when we did our outdoor pool, people telling us over and over and over, we like to have shade, which seemed odd if you like outdoors, but when you spend a little bit of time at the lake house in the sun.
Yeah, if you go to one of the new time concerts there, you have to fight for a spot to sit.
That's one of our pictures we took and I think what you found is everybody was crunched up on the wall, the performers, as well as, you know, the audience that were trying to seek shade. But then also opportunities down by the water, you know, to get people that want to fish or are close. Again, these aren't finished, we're just in draft mode.
Is this the scale?
It's fairly, I think,
Because the hill to me seems a lot bigger up behind the lake house than that, or?
Yeah.
It's about right, okay.
And they showed this all on turf because it is so draft, but the area behind the lake house, we do envision like full landscape.
Yeah.
And so we're still working through some iterations here.
And the proposed, you know, bridge treatment where it's a little more open. Right now, it looks like Jersey barriers, barriers that cross there. Let's see, and then access to the west lot on that side. So again, very different look, a little bit close up, again, the idea of informal seating. These would probably not be turf panels, but they might be, you know, flowers, color, get some texture in there, but those are just, you know, placeholders with this, this program. You can see a little bit more enhanced atmosphere. I think this drawing tells you there's not enough shade.
Yes.
You've got just, not even enough, this guy's in the sun, actually. So we're trying to work with them on that aspect, but some of the other pieces are coming together just a different.
Are there other, I mean, it's been a long time since I've been to the state meetings and so I haven't seen, you know, the latest in awnings and one of those sort of, I think, sale kinds of things.
Might be looking at something more custom, we're still pushing the design. I think our thought is, can we get something that can at least for now convey our message? And then when we actually get back into the construction, we could take in a deeper look, but, you know, these could be photos to show what it could be or attract people to a project. Because we started thinking we may not get in our timeframe and budget, everything, you know, but can we visualize what it could be like? Any ideas to add more shade?
We did research several other kind of reference projects and have some images we've sent them that show more layered awnings and ones that kind of fit the architectural vocabulary of the roof of the lake house, so.
Would you think of permanent or like the pool where they come down in the, in the fall?
Probably would come down in the fall, yeah.
We think the idea of, you know, maybe seasonal.
Yeah.
Because there's winds and storms in year round, so it would have to be anchored in.
Oh, yeah, sure, there'd be a whole lot of more wear on it if you lift it up here around.
There's the old stairs down to the lake house, obviously, if anybody's trying to manage those, they go straight down and I've seen people fall down those stairs. So this would be a way to sort of have a nice stretched out ramp system that gets you down to the lake house or an improved stair experience. Parking at the top, maybe some improvements in that upper lot there. And then coming across the bridge over to this area, looking back at the lake house, you know, again, that vocabulary of trails with informal rock seating, with views back out, make a little more sense. And then we shifted, so again, we've sort of went around the north side of the Carl campus, we're swinging back down to the downtown area. Worked, one of our students in landscape architecture was available this summer, worked with our planning team, coming up with this idea of, again, how do we get people downtown? We're starting to work independently on a few of these pieces and now we're trying to pull them together. But again, you see University Avenue, we'll see improvements there, IDOT, but that's still an auto-oriented experience.
I think that's.
I mean, it's needed, but it's going to be a very different experience if you're on University Avenue trying to find your way and some of the proposals we're going to pitch here, but the idea is destinations. We pitched a few, there's a lot, whatever you're interested in, but that's what Lincoln Square, the courthouse, you know, place to eat, sit, the Boneyard.
Cabanas?
Yes, those are those little mini parks.
A little bump out in front of restaurants?
Which are neat and draw people, so they're sort of like a modern version of a mini park for today. Certainly the Boneyard Creek as it continues. And then independently, we've also been looking at, very concerned at Lille Park. So we started thinking, gee, on that, from Crystal Lake to downtown, you hit Lille Park and what we're noticing and know is a couple of things. One, there's some opportunities for redevelopment. This is moving forward, that's the new market facility that's going to open the food court. We identified a few that we spent a little bit of time, you know, that some of these open lots are for sale near the cottage. We've also been concerned about what's going to happen on that corner with that large historic oak tree. And so we're trying to create a series of drawings that will allow us to have conversations that might shift or get people interested in a different way. We did know the developers had looked at opportunities for, you know, quick development, quick marts, fast food, things like that. We're just really trying to, trying to get people to think, is there another option there? And so is there a way to save that tree, create a slice? Well, the other key reason is we think this is a safer approach. When you have places of refuge where you can sit before you cross, you're not right on the street, maybe it's still elevated, there's more of a plaza overlook. Again, it doesn't have to be a lot of real estate, but can we save that tree and create sort of a green edge along? It's really, if you go down University Avenue, aside from our parks, there really are no green spaces. There are a few trees and I think there's some planted elements. But again, we're very happy about the University Avenue project, but then, right on the back side of us, that rail line, you know, lays there, right there at the Boneyard Crossing, which is a really nice development here. We see again Broadway and Race as major corridors for improvements and connectivity to downtown to Crystal Lake, to the neighborhoods on the north and areas on the south.
Jim, do we know who owns that corner? Is it a local person? I guess that's what I want to know.
The Birch Kaiser Group owns this.
Okay.
They've had to sign up, they've allowed us to park there.
But, yeah.
Met with them to see what, you know, keep in touch, let them know we're still working on ideas, but we'd like to go back with them and at least share, you know, these images to, to.
Yeah, but it's easier to deal with someone who's a local from the coast, big out of town.
You know, when we talk with the city and anyone, you know, we think, you know, certainly mixed use, but housing, people want to live downtown. We don't have a lot of areas that are residential in feel, you know, trees and a park in the backdrop. So I think, we think that that would be a likely good use. Certainly, we don't know what's going to happen with, you know, the Silver Creek and.
And that, the lower yellow is Allen Strong's?
Right here, right.
Okay, and then up above?
We met with him as well.
Is it a variety of owners? Or is this all one block?
I think he owns these three houses and there's an independent house of the blue one in the middle.
Right, okay.
And so again, and for any viewers at home, these are just draft ideas, we're not, you know, taking anybody's property or trying to make a move, but really, we're trying to encourage a discussion. We think about our downtown core in a more advantageous way, one that's a little greener and a little more pedestrian and bike-friendly. And again, the, you know, connector that starts to get us back and forth on the east-west is, you know, the potential rail line. We're taking an exonometric view of it, again, you just see it in a different way, the Broadway, but again, we start to look at, can we green up some of these spaces along the front here? Again, pitching the housing option instead of preserving the small sliver with the historic tree on the corner. You know, if you look just down the street, the Stratford, which is down the street here, I believe that's it, right there. You know, just sort of borrowed that quick architectural element to get the idea, it could certainly be row houses that could stair-step down this nice condo, could be mixed use. We even talked high-rise. Again, when I say we, it's our planning team.
Right.
We, we're just, we're not developers, but we want to create a vocabulary to begin to, you know, get people to think. We know there's some other development that's happening with the new brewery off, that's coming over next to the Boneyard Crossing at that area, my kosher's place. So again, creating destinations, places people want to go that they're going to go anyway. It's like, we have that experience. Again, Broadway corridor has a lot of potential. This shows another phase of the Boneyard improvements that could happen, you know, throughout this whole area. So there's really something for everybody, the city, the park district, downtown merchants. Yes, question?
But it's still like the question of University Avenue is this huge barrier of movement of people.
Right.
So I guess, I'm curious if there's any ideas, I mean, the city given us any inkling on what they may or may not be willing to do?
Well, I mean, to be honest, I think the project is being led by IDOT and they're sort of coming at it from their perspective. I think there were opportunities for the city staff, Public Works to, you know, interject and I think they did. Obviously, they're aware of the safety concerns, the volume of traffic, it's multimodal. I think it's going to be an improved high-traffic corridor that will probably have safety elements. I think there'll be, you know, better places to walk and ride your bike, but I think this would be a very different feel. You'll still have cars moving at a good volume, you know, unless there's an ability to really lower traffic speeds. We have buses, we have cars, everything's kind of going pretty fast. Also, commercial zone, people are going right and left constantly, you know, that adds to the, you know, a little bit of the street buzz that goes on in that area. We met with IDOT once to sort of share our ideas. Certainly several, one is, gee, we wish it would have went further down to MTD and Ambox included all the way out there because there's neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks and are disconnected, that don't have adequate access. Obviously, they didn't talk to us early enough and their plans are set. And so when we rose the, brought up those issues, you know, I think they, okay, we hear what you're saying and we got them to agree to at least continue discussion about what about going further east on that, on that corridor?
Jim, I think they are proposing some improved crossings on University, at Broadway and Race.
Broadway and at Race.
Which would mean what?
Longer time to cross the streets or queuing or, you know, things you can see a little bit easier to queue the water.
It's really complicated to cross at University, Race and University.
I always prefer to cross there.
Yeah, I mean, so you gotta hustle, but.
Right. You know, I guess around town, we've had, you know, mentions of bridges or underpasses, things like that. Those are not currently in the scope of any of the work right now. It's all basically surface work. But there'll be an attempt to, you know, plant more trees if trees are lost. There'll be areas where they'll have to narrow it down because there's buildings or other removable objects, so it'll vary down the campus. Again, that same idea of could the KRT be extended? Which kind of leads us into some of the images that were developed. So right here, this is the intersection of University and Lincoln. So we've got the tracks crossing and, you know, just various arrangements of buildings there. Is there a way to transform it more into something like that at the corner where you create opportunities for business growth, create opportunities, you know, enter the KRT, enhancement of landscape and, you know, visual things, public art?
And all that water company stuff is coming out of there now, so that's going to make a huge difference at that corner.
We're seeing these pockets of opportunities pop up in the near downtown area. And so the spine could definitely be a nice, nice improvement.
I encourage you all to go look at this intersection and look southeast. It's, it's just a beautiful view that just sort of beckons and I can't get this image out of my head now.
Right. I mean, when you drive by after seeing this, it's all, that's all wrong. We've got to fix this and try to, you know, try to take advantage of this opportunity. Again, many other communities that have, you know, rail corridors or linear elements, utility, whatever, are capitalizing on it and saying, we're going to reclaim those spaces, they're going to be core urban amenities we're going to, we're going to promote. We did take liberties borrowing a few of our local businesses, hopefully they don't mind, we do have draft stamps, so it's just an idea. Then we wanted to sort of test it, how does, we get to the Carl Campus, so if you're familiar with the cancer center on, sort of on that south side. Interesting, I always read landscape cues, the way it's set up today, sort of have this area, it's unattractive, it's what it is, and you start to see this sort of transitional landscape and then a fence, so that to us suggests, you know, we don't want to be a part of that, it's on this side, even though we know there's crossings to some of the parking lots that Carl has access to.
That's actually a pedestrian crossing that's in there.
Yeah, yeah, because it's further up where the, is the, is the next street. And is it, I'm trying to think what's back there, there's some residential further up on Kohler, but then east of, that is?
It's open in that area, there's a parking lot, I think, in this area right back here.
A little aerial of top.
We have this, work at a transition in some way like that. And so we're trying to portray a, you know, very different look there. We might, go ahead.
Who owns the corner at Lincoln? Isn't it, because there's been some discussion.
How we wait for standing?
Yeah, I think the neighborhood association or the neighborhood near that would very much be in favor of something like this.
You mean the northeast, the northwest corner there? Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's how.
Weird zoning, I think, right, or multiple zoning.
I think things that start to work here, obviously, a different kind of a transportation element, we can walk around. KRT vocabulary, wayfinding, landscape elements, you know, sort of freeing up now that the fence is gone, has a more pedestrian back and forth flow to it, certainly could use verticals with lighting and other landscape elements, you know, to round that out.
I think it'd have a first aid center.
Then looking sort of back, Station Theater right here, very familiar to all of us, again, probably underutilized urban spaces in other places, they'd quickly be snatched up and transitioned, but you can see where the one-rail corridor, things we're still, probably need to learn a lot more, you know, what's the right of ways through here.
Yeah, and how much is that used?
This is labeled, it's actually looking east.
It is looking east.
Yes, looking east. Yes. And I think we want to rework some of our location maps here, but the idea is, you know, I think, I think there's two trains a week, I heard a Tuesday and a Sunday.
Oh, yeah.
Serve the Dart Company in Amosaco. So there's two clients on that line. And so, you know, Brandon Boyce said he has a regular meeting with Dart. He'd like to at least find out more. What is your transportation plan? What is it now? What it is for the future? But let's even say the tracks stay, you know, I see another trail. This is where everyone's already walking and riding their bike right there. So it's not a huge stretch that you could have a shared side-by-side. Norfolk Southern is the rail company. And so, you know, definitely a shared approach, you know. In this example here, certainly it's, yeah, I think you, you know, more of a landscape buffer. But again, it could be a existing track and a, you know, some sort of walkway. But again, it really transitions that whole downtown feel. I think when we walked it, when the mayor came over to the cottage and we shared these, you know, we went out in the back and looked. And as Derek said, you, you almost, you want to see the connection there. It's connected in your mind. It's connected physically. It just doesn't, it's not open and set up like this. And it's not a stretch. It's not a wild idea. It's, it's very commonly done. So then, as we looked at some of these little pocket spaces or parks or transitional areas, just wanted to, you know, keep in mind, it can be different than what's there. So the idea of, you know, exhibitions or concerts or bonfire, you know, having a village event. Again, this isn't a circular. It could be linear, it could be square, be a, any sort of shape of space. Open-air activities, market days, outdoor theater, seasonal type things, skating rinks, so...
Sorry. And these were inspirational concepts that Carmelo, our intern, brought to us as things that might be situated along the Boneyard. Perhaps in that gravel lot behind Lille Park, south of Lille Park. But still, you know, ones that could cohabitate with parking because we know that that parking is really vital to Silver Creek.
You know, sometimes you see what it is now, but you can't picture other types of uses. And so it was an idea generator to, you know, move people off the mark of what is and to what could be. Continuing on, Lille Park on this side, the gravel lot on the backside there, existing tracks at the Race Street. And the Boneyard Crossing is right behind us in this example, sort of, and it could be part of an edge development. Could be housing up on Race Street. But the idea of outdoor plaza space or usable park space with the corridor done in the nighttime. Seeing where there's lighting and, you know, viability and, you know, a little more exciting than what, what you might see there today.
Isn't it really ghostly looking? People, you can kind of see through them.
I think, so you can see the back that's behind you.
It's kind of weird.
Again, in this area, I think these are owned by Carl, those kind of warehouse style. You can see him right up in the exhibit drawing there after the triangle there by the arrow. But it's sort of, kind of things we saw in Plank Road Trail System in Frankfurt where you had, you know, businesses that end up starting popping their doors out onto the trail, which could look, you know, giving it a little more urban taste, you know, where you have sort of, you know, murals and that sort of thing. Certainly, you could have lighting, cameras. Shows the wide variety of use. Again, you could scale it if it's narrower or tighter, certainly wider in spots. But again, that, that idea of, of kind of using what we have in a different way, it just gives it a much different feel. So we had the good fortune of meeting with the mayor and the Carl representative with us while we shared, you know, discussions. Just to gauge, is there any interest? Does this make sense? Is this a wild dream or should we drop it and forget about it? So tonight, I think we wanted to share with you all, kind of get your impression. Before anybody would say it, we certainly do have a lot of big projects. And certainly borrowing or attracting more, you know, seems to challenge, you know, our, our abilities. But we do think it's something that should be looked at. We're certainly willing to be a part of that. I think next steps could be, you know, what, what does Urbana City and what do some of the entities, what would Carl think? Would anybody help? Steps we think we need is some sort of analysis, study, who owns the land, how much right of way is there? Are there leases? Are there utilities? What's the history and the use? Have there been any accidents? Whether auto, people, trains, you know, really get the whole rundown. We think that would be a good way to get information to help us talk with Norfolk Southern. To add to that, don't, we don't want to forget, on the further edge of town, there's an effort with the Senate or the Forest Preserve to still try to acquire or consider acquiring a little more of that real estate. The goal would be at least to get, could somebody help us get to Smith Road? Where you would have at least a cross-street. You certainly could bring your trail. That may be a longer-term, you know, process. Not sure how long that would take. So we are looking at what we can do right now to, to make things usable. But there's a number of strategies, so we really need to start working together, start employing who knows who, what kind of resources, and, and see where we go with that. So that was a lot of information. Certainly would like to hear what you all think or if you have comments about that.
I do. So I think this is really interesting and really insightful and forward-thinking. When you first showed the photos of Crystal Lake Park, so you know my favorite, what my other favorite place is, Shelby Farm Parks in Memphis. But, and having been traveling to Memphis now for the last five years, I've seen an incredible growth and development in areas that they've done. So what I, so they took kind of a hole in the mud, a big mud hole that they threw some boats on. And recently, and this is, we can't compare ourselves because it's Conservancy. And I don't know who the donor is, but, you know, FedEx is headquartered there, so let's suspect that they contribute. But just the transformation of the lake area and the hardscaping is incredible. Like the space, the feel, and so much of what I see here is like, we sort of have that, that foundation and we just need to clear it away and, and just the number of people and the usage. But to do that and not connect it to downtown Urbana seems like it's missing. You know, we will have invested a lot of money and time and et cetera, and we need to be able to connect it from a pedestrian.
Yep.
You don't want to leave it isolated.
Right, and that's sort of what I see happening right now in Urbana. Like, there's a Kikapoo rail, but it's got a dead end. Then we did this, the Boneyard. That is incredible, but there's no, I mean, I live in Urbana, really close to downtown, and I didn't, like, I miss it, like, and I, you know, so a way to connect to things together, I think, is, the connectivity is just completely missing. And that's what I think is so forward-thinking here, because I think it's, we've got pieces, parts. And I even think about, like, you know, in downtown Memphis, they took the Tom Lee Park, which was just a big strip along the river. And, you know, it's, my, my sister has told you, this is not a place that you would go in the evening. But now, what is it? It is full of families and people and walking, and so it just sort of...
Transformational.
Yeah, and I just think, I don't know when I was thinking the other, where, maybe I'd been in downtown Champaign and just sort of thinking, what are we doing in Urbana? To draw this type of group, these different groups of people and to improve the city. And it's just, you know, this is something that I think makes us unique and, and different, but makes us a destination.
Ditto.
Well, I think I would say that, I think it's real important that as a park district, especially with our staff and the way they plan things, that we're involved in this process. Not that we're going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars in switching our priorities from the, from the Crystal Lake onto this new trail, but that we're involved in the process. Because this process may take 20 years before it's to full state. And that Boneyard Creek piece gives people the encouragement of, oh, this would be really cool. It's going all the way to the university. And so it's start, it has a way of sort of creating new connections as well. But if you just have that piece and then nobody talks about anything or plans anything, then you just have a two-block trail.
Well, I think it's really good that we're involved in it because I think we have, we have sort of both halves of the expertise. And that's, I mean, it's not a slam on the city, but that's not, that's not how they, they don't look at the world the same way that we do. And I think for something like this, you have to have people who look at the world like the park district does just as much as you have to have the, the city's expertise in their zoning and all those kinds of governmental things that they have to take into consideration. But the aesthetics and the, the kind of long-term planning of, of people use is probably not one of their strengths. And so the fact that we're working with them is terrific.
I was impressed.
Well, and I think another piece of that strength is the staff has been extremely good in collaborating with all kinds of people. So that even though we may not be the people putting all the money up front, I think we could help pull a number of different groups together to get the whole project completed.
Well, I think people trust us, us, meaning you guys, to, you know, to have a vision, to do things that are, that are, that the community really likes and that's appropriate and interesting and useful to the community.
Yeah, I mean, that, the main thing, a vision like this benefits everyone.
Absolutely.
And I think that's hard to find these days, you know, as opposed to people fighting over different pieces or, you know, frustrated with development in, in different areas, you know, in terms of zoning. But this, this really truly benefits everybody.
And on a lot, and in a lot of different ways.
And the mayor clearly gets it. She, she sees the economic impacts associated with it.
Oh, yeah.
We've been already doing some independent research, you know, probably during when we met, to find out more about rail with trail, rail instead of trail alternatives. There's just a lot of enthusiasm.
Right.
We're here to keep working on it.
Michael, anything you'd care to add?
That was quite a report.
Yes, it was a little, it was more than I expected.
You gotta, you just have to see it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, and there are even some things you didn't cover there. I don't know who owns them, but, I mean, there's, to the west of the, the low-income housing where the brewery is, I mean, there's, there's a wooded area. I mean, it's not high-quality wooded area, but, but there's a whole lot of stuff along through that corridor that one might imagine is being underutilized and, and could be opened up in some really interesting way.
Spent a lot of time looking at that in person.
Yeah, I think getting that, we think getting that, we don't have a word, the study, but learn more, the analysis. Who owns what? What's the plans? Is it in or out? What's on each of those corridors? Certainly, we, we know our friends in Champaign would applaud this to see that because that makes it that much more real, you know, as it goes west. So there is something for everybody. I think when we speak about our underrepresented, there's any number of needs of better connectivity, easier places to walk and ride a bike, places you can go that you can have fun for free. So that's a nice, nice amenity considering. What struck us too is people are already using it. You can see the desire for, we see people. In fact, that's going to be one of our next tasks, is go out and start photographing uses on that, you know, what's actually happening there. I think in talking with more people at the city, because we did get a chance to present to their, their core staff planning group, all the department heads, I think you're right. Everybody identified. They liked it. They thought it was positive. Brought people together. I think this suggests is now we may want to be looking, I mean, we want the whole thing, but maybe a reasonable boundary might be at, you know, Vine Street, just west of the, the Overpass Bridge, over to maybe Goodwin, because that's how we bring the university to the table. So I think the mayor was suggesting with the new medical school coming, this would be an amenity, a great feature to start featuring, create better connectivity. I think that would get us over in the neighborhood of President's St. Francis Hospital or close there. There's already the Goodwin, you know, bike trail system. Goes all the way from Bradley down to campus. So now you can start to see these big connectivity loops and squares, linear elements, you know, to get us where we need to go. But that's, I think what staff's recommending is we continue to work with the core groups to see how far we can push this. You know, where's it going to go, while realizing we, we still have other major projects we're trying to balance. They're all good. Obviously, you can't do everything. But we do think this is a long-term amenity that if we didn't promote it, didn't push it, it probably won't happen. Not saying about us, but if all of us don't.
You have to have everybody in it, yep.
And I think when, so far, everybody we've seen it says, yeah, I like this. I want to, I want to see it go further.
It would be wonderful.
Well, that's all I think I had in that report. Again, it reflects all the planning staff, all the park staff that have looked at it, working with all the other entities. So thanks to everybody, we were able to sort of pull this together from May till now. Now we just have to see how many inroads we can do to make it all happen.
Hooray.
Well, thank you. Moving on to the president's report, upcoming meetings. Got November 7, board study session, and at the moment penciled in on that one is, is looking at Binkard Grove planning and...
Where's Binkard Grove?
It's at Perkins and High Cross Road.
Okay, ah, okay. Yes, thank you.
About five acres, is that right?
Right.
And, and Wondell Sculpture Garden progress. November 14 is going to be a busy financial meeting.
Well, I'll see.
So as a follow-on to something we're going to deal with here in just a moment, we had the public hearing on truth and, for truth and taxation and approving our levy for the coming year. And we've also got our non-referendum bond sale ordinance to, to get passed. And approve the annual capital budget, project budget as part of that. And I don't know if there are going to be any bids to award, but, and there's ADA Transition Plan Update. And it's getting around time to appointing a board representative to the IAPD annual meeting.
Yes.
Number of things to do there next month. I didn't have anything to report beyond that. Moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group did meet at the end of September. One of the things we discussed is this next matter coming up. I think we made sure that that information got out to, to the study session last week, so. And there were also discussions of longer-term financial, not prospects, yet challenges for, for dealing with some of the many projects that we've got coming up. Was there anything you wanted to add to that, Bob?
Uh, not really.
And then, policy study group, has there been any?
We have not met.
And Parks Foundation representative, LaShonda's, is not here. And the Uptech Planning Study Group, is there anything?
We're, we don't really need to meet yet for another couple of months.
Okay.
So we're just coasting on our success.
Yeah, moving on then to old business. There was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so there's nothing to do there. The first item under new business, we moved to the front of the agenda anyway. And that brings us then to the second item under new business, action on Resolution 2017-12, determining amount to be raised by taxation.
Did you want to start, Tim, or?
Uh, just wanted to lead in with, for, you know, certainly viewers at home, you know, it's always a challenging meeting time for us. It's a time we would set a rate for our levy. Multiple things to be concerned about. Obviously, you know, tax certainty in Urbana is, is desirable, knowing where things will, will lay. Communicating our choices in this interim has been very challenging over the last few years. Planning on the black box, being able to explain that, knowing that numbers are, in a sense artificially inflated with the real concern that we have to be able to capture anything that would be able to help us do the kind of projects and the capital needs, the programs and events that, you know, we spent the evening talking about. So it's a very difficult, we understand, you know, call for the board. Again, it's sort of, you have to do it. It's difficult to explain if, what it means, and if you don't do it, there are repercussions if things would shake out on the financial side in a different way. So just sort of leading into that for anybody who might be watching at home or listening, we give this a lot of thought. We spend a lot of time. I think we talked to our other units in, in the community. What are they doing? How are they responding? What we've tended to see the last several years is a very similar pattern between schools and MTD and, you know, our other, other locals' units that, that have to create the levy each year. So with that, turn it back over, over to the board and Katie.
So I just wanted to reiterate, we had a really nice, I thought, informative discussion last week at the study session. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that we made about the process, the levy process in general. So this is the first step in the property tax levy process for our 2017 levy, which will be received in calendar year 18, next, next summer's property tax bills, which will be the Urbana Park District's fiscal year 2019. Property taxes provide around 70... fiscal year 2019. Property taxes provide around 70% of Urbana Park District's total revenues, 67% of our operating revenues in the 2018 budget, but that number varies year to year. The levy is the legal action passed by the park board directing the county treasurer to collect taxes on behalf of the park district to finance district services. Each year, there's, there is new information about new growth, the equalized assessed value of the current property of the district, a yearly board of review adjustment, and a yearly township multiplier. Because of the timing of the levy, the park district must pass a levy ordinance before all of these factors are known. And in fact, we don't know the final EAV calculations until April. The park district calculates a percent increase in, in its extension, or in the levy that we produce in October, using our best estimates, and the final information used in their calculations isn't known till April. We do not set our own tax rate. The tax rate is set each year by a formula defined as the PTEL formula, which is commonly known as the Tax Cap Law, which was approved by Champaign County voters in 1997. The law strictly limits the amount of new property taxes that the district can receive, and funds may not increase more than 5% from the previous year's capped extension, or by the change in the CPI, whichever's less, and this year's change in the CPI was 2.1%. So, under the Truth and Taxation Act, the Urbana Park District must post an ad with a black border of a specific size in the newspaper if the aggregate extension that we're requesting, plan, that we're planning to approve, is greater than a 5% increase over the dollars of last year's extension. This ad, which is part of adopting the levy each year, is required by the 1981 Truth and Taxation Law. It is not the final tax law that will be collected, but is a step required very early on in this process. In, in the application of the Tax Cap Law, if the district adopts a levy amount that's too high, it'll be limited only to the amount that we're allowed to receive under the Tax Cap Law. So, if the park district, but if the park district estimates too low, it will forever reduce the amount of property taxes that can be received in future years, because under the Tax Cap Law, our next year's extension is based on the current year's tax dollars received. So, if you have a shortfall in one year because you didn't levy enough, that shortfall carries forward to all future years, because your next year is based on your current year. Last year, just to remind the board, last year, the board selected a probable plus 25% option that was presented to them. The status of the charity care lawsuits are ongoing, and this balloon levy protects us against the uncertainty of the outcome of these cases. With that information, I present to you the levy options for 2017 levy. For informational purposes, I did some additional calculations again this year to determine the amount necessary to avoid a black box, and that would be what I would call probable plus 1.271%, which is not enough of wiggle room to allow for any fluctuation in additional changes in EAV before the EAVs finalized in April. Staff would recommend that the board select the middle option, the probable plus 25, for the 2017 levy resolution, which would be a total extension increase of 26.32%. But, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have, or help in any other way to help you make this decision.
Well, I think one thing to remark, remark on Tim's comment, I kind of think of this as, we have so much tax-exempt property in Urbana, much higher percentage than Champaign does. And so, that puts a pretty heavy burden on the people that aren't tax-exempt. And by putting a number on the black box so you don't miss any potential money coming, just allows us to spread that tax burden over a broader group of taxpayers.
Any other comments? I mean, I think it is important to realize that, that what we levy is not what we get. And the reason that we're going, have been going for such big numbers is the, largely the uncertainty relating to these court cases. And we have no control, nor any particular knowledge of when those may be resolved, so that we know one way or another. And that level of uncertainty and the fact that any under levy that we do continues then to affect the, the finances of the district in perpetuity, it leaves us, I think, little choice but to, to put a big number there. And it's, it's embarrassing, it's hard to explain, and at the same time, I, for myself, I believe we would, we would be shirking our duty if, if we didn't put a pretty, pretty sizable number up there.
I agree.
Well, I'm happy to make the motion. I move to approve resolution 2017-12, determining the amounts estimated to be necessary for the 2017 levy payable in 2018 upon taxable property is the 25%, which is $8,397,874.
Second.
Okay. I, I believe Commissioner Del Coleman was the first second.
You're a second late, Bob.
I didn't get halfway out.
I can't see you, that's the trouble.
Okay, so we've, we've got a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion or questions before we actually vote on this? Hearing none, a roll call vote is required, and we'll start remotely again with Bob.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with the four commissioners voting. And lastly, we've got a review of the 2018 capital improvement budget.
Staff has a draft copy of the proposed capital improvement budget. I'm sure planning staff would love to walk you through it or answer questions. No action is needed tonight, but wanted to give you a chance to at least see it and comment.
Is there anything in particular you want us to, to know in this?
Well, I think, you know, we had an objective when we were meeting together to go through this budget, was to, to find ways that we can, you know, find some efficiencies in the budget where some of the, those funds can be flushed down in a contingency and utilized in the Crystal Lake Park project. So, there's a number of, of items that are a little lower than what the standard allotment is for that line. But, that being said, we were very conscientious to make sure that we weren't leaving any, you know, other of our assets behind, and getting behind the eight ball in another area while we were addressing
Sure.
Crystal Lake. I was, I can walk through real quick the...
Some highlights, sure.
Some of, some of those changes. The vehicles and equipment line is, is including a 72-inch mower for athletics, a trade-in of a two-ton, two-ton dump truck for a one-ton. That one-ton is what our staff are, it's utilizing more often, the two tons from 1992, and it's really not used very frequently.
That's that big, really huge thing, yep.
Hazard tree was, was cut by 5,000, construction crew by, by 20,000. I can say, construction crew has some funds in, in previous years still remaining, so we feel comfortable that we're not shorthanding anything from that area. The operations and recreation, small equipment, both superintendents had agreed to lower from 10,000 to 5,000 in each one of those lines. The plan is for the operating budgets to take a little more of that equipment purchasing. Mechanical replacements, this is kind of one of those things where I talk about, we're still looking at, at making sure we're, we're taking care of everything that we, we hold outside of Crystal Lake as well. So, this year was a year that mechanical replacement was actually slotted to start being alternate years, and it was not included. We decided to, to put that mechanical replacement back in it at $10,000, to make sure that we'll have some funds available if anything comes up with any of those items. I'll note that the trail projects line is, remain the same. It's currently slotted for ITEP overages. Remainder will go towards KRT work. We increased the hardscape and fencing budget by $10,000. This is for the King Corp. project I spoke on a little bit earlier. UIAC capital dropped by $20,000 from 40 to 20. We're planning on doing a pool pack replacement. The $40,000 each year was originally a way to beef up money for that replacement. We're currently planning on doing an English fund, funding for that, that project, and we decided we can lower our capital line for that.
And when is, when are we thinking that's going to?
July or?
Next year.
Ooh.
Found replacement, yeah. We, we've had a number of very expensive repairs. The coolant that that system uses is no longer made.
Oh, well, that's a problem.
So, the price is skyrocketing on it.
Of course.
And so, we, the, the new facilities director for the school district has a lot of experience with these air handling, he ran the airport for a while, and he, he got a firsthand tour of it with Joseph, and his synopsis was that it's been incredibly well-maintained, but it's, it's, it's due. It, it, there's a, a number of elements that he's concerned about. We will look at the possibility of, of anything we might be able to hold on to. He thought that the motherboard might be something that could, could be repurposed, but that would be dependent upon it actually working with a vendor of choice. And so, and he's been working on an RFQ to request qualifications for engineering firms to look at it. And this will be our opportunity to look at other efficiency items as well. We'll be looking at the possibility of a VFD that would exhaust in correlation with the air quality by taking measurements of actual water quality that are correlated with air quality, and so we wouldn't be exhausting at a, at a set rate.
Uh-huh. So, a response to the conditions as opposed to just a standard flow?
So, we're, it's a, we knew the day was coming.
Yeah.
In fact, in the audit that we did a few years back, this, this is, this is on that schedule. So, we're, the, the alternative, you know, isn't a good one. Either the coolant prices keep skyrocketing, we get a massive leak, or worse yet, it, it goes down, and then you're, you're months out.
Yeah. Maybe we'll be hit by lightning. We claim insurance on it.
When the new one shows up on the truck.
Yes, there we go.
We have a couple PRC items. This is siding, $65,000. This is, well, this is currently from a quote for IGW for cement siding, which I believe is on the lake house currently.
And that's our cool.
And that, okay. You'll see PRC landscaping. This is coinciding with other PRC improvements. We're planning this to be an internal work done by our, our staff in-house, much similar to the cottage project. Metal brick bridge painting, we have a quote that's good through the spring. We're planning on getting that work done.
It's bridges or?
All three bridges, yeah. And we had them inspected by Jake Wolf, our structural engineer, and this was back when, gosh, it was when we had the flooding in there, some, some scour and the footings. At that time, he, he forecasted out that at this time, 2018 is when we really should be painting those. There's some, some advanced rust, and so, this is an actual proposal, given the, the cost, we'll, we'll bid it out, but, but we know that, that shouldn't cost any more than this.
You'll see under the ADA projects, these are a number of items for the James Room, Phase 1. Phase 1 includes the kitchen, opening up the kitchen. This does not include the extending of the north wall. We're calling that Phase 2. This will add a little bit of extra storage. The hallway that goes immediately after you walk out of the James Room, you take a right, heads north, that would be blocked off and become storage, utilized for storage for Phillips. The door that leads into the James Room then would, would not have a lock in order to have that, that, that escape through the James Room then and out. So, that, we have $65,000 from 2018, so $60,000 from 2017 ADA, and then a special acqui, or request for distribution from the CUSR board that's not been approved at this point, would be $45,000. Once they approve that, it would show up once, my understanding is the Champaign Park District approves their next year's fiscal, their next fiscal year's budget. And that's where you're marking all that currently for the, that James Room work.
The money from the special request is operating reserves or special rack? The reserves are, go along with Champaign Park District's policies, and we're over that threshold of where, where they're supposed to have, how much they're supposed to have. So, in our agreement that we recently did seven, eight months ago, whenever we did it, it specifically states in there that at the beginning of a fiscal year, you can look at any overages in the reserve fund, and some of those funds can be distributed back proportionally by what was put in.
Sure.
So, I don't know if you remember, probably five years ago, six years, maybe even longer than that, time flies, but we, when we just recently had completed the audit, the ADA audit, we did get a $40,000 special payment then to go towards those ADA projects to help knock off some of our list.
Other big item in here, of course, the contingency. It's about $350,000 slated for Crystal Lake Park and, and our next phase of work there. We're still working through cost estimates and proposal for engineering. The, it's all told, you know, the entire lake restoration, the infrastructure, the access, is, is a much bigger number. It's approaching $8 million. We've been looking at an initial phase, which is about 2.4. And even there, we don't have that. With, with this $347,000 and future capital allocated towards that project, we have about 1.4. And so, we're, we're targeting a, a design project of about $2 million. We want to see how far they'll get around the lake edge while still addressing the water quality issues, build some success there. And then our thinking, and this is something we're borrowing from a conference that Kara went to, a planning conference in Naperville, where they're working on a series of lakes, $200,000 a year, just kind of gradually biting off what we can, so that could carry us forward once we have some success with that initial wave of projects. Obviously, 1.4 and $2 million is a gulf there. We're hoping some success in fundraising with, with the foundation's efforts. Still hold out hope that there may be some grant opportunities. And, and, you know, certainly we'll, we'll design bid alternates that we, we don't, you know, we, we can fit our budget with, with what we award, so.
The other key point is, we really think it's important to get something moving.
Yep.
We might attract more people, encourage, I mean, we just saw those existing, they're not gonna get any better. So, if we are able to get some traction, point to something, maybe create a little more hope, who knows? And if, if not, at least it gets us that closer to, you know, getting, getting around the lake.
Other big sacrifice in this capital year is Corky was willing to, he was calling getting a showmobile. He, he felt like the improvements at Phillips were, were the, the bigger need at this point. And certainly, we've got some more inspiring time working on it.
And this will be a space that Special Rec is actually very excited about. It actually be set up as a demonstration kitchen. So, it's pretty cool, exciting. It's a space that Special Rec's excited about. They were part of the planning for it. They came over and are just, when's it gonna be done? So, they're really excited to hopefully get some programming here. We can do some, in the outreach and wellness, or the underrepresented study, some of the things, we're cooking programs.
Yeah, there were.
There's dietary, dietitian-type programs that we can do. Janet's excited to start working with as well, with senior programs. So, lots of, lots of opportunities there to take a space that we already have and make players. We started that process with the multi-purpose floor, the support court floor, and multi-purpose rooms. We're starting to see some, some new things coming in there, so this is just another way to utilize the, the entire space that we have.
Yeah, good.
Love to attract a, maybe a small donor in a dream to allow us to move the wall, do all of the work in that kitchen area. I think it'd be challenging to do some of it and then come back later to try to tear things apart. I mean, it's just timing, it's busy year-round.
Right.
Summer is camps and year-round, it's, you know, busy. So, we, we may be fortunate. We're working with the foundation. This isn't one of the, you know, targets, but maybe if, just in talking with people, if somebody had an interest, that might help us get a little bit more done.
Maybe another FJ James out there. Maybe another Effie James out there, somebody we don't even know about who finds it of use. That'd be lovely.
And we didn't need any action tonight, but just want to give you a preview and a chance to ask questions. It'll come back next month. Certainly could ask more questions, but.
Yeah, we, we do have to approve a preliminary budget in order to go ahead with our bond issue.
We do it the same, we do it at the November meeting along with the bond issue, yeah.
Okay, moving along to comments from commission, I'm, I'm sorry. Any new business removed from the consent agenda, there was none, so we're on to comments from commission.
I have none.
Neither.
Nope.
Okay, well, I guess then that we've come to the end of our agenda. I will declare us adjourned.